Alright guys, it's time. I will call to order the City of Milton Special Common Council Meeting this Monday, October twenty-seventh at five P M. Can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at Milton City Hall, Hometown Ace Hardware and Milton Piggly Wiggly.
Thank you. Approval of agenda.
So move.
Second. There's a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda in four, approval of minutes from October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Salute.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-three authorizing signatory municipality to exceed the levy limit for the Edgerton Fire Protection District.
This resolution authorizes all municipalities within the Edgerton Fire Protection District to use CPI plus five or plus two for their levy limit exemption. The city does not plan on using CPI plus two this year. However, every member of the Fire Protection District needs to vote for that for any individual municipality to use the CPI plus two. So it is in the intergovernmental agreement that we will all do it every year, whether we're using it or not, to give options to other municipalities if they need it. In essence, this really affects the city, not at all this year.
Any questions or a motion?
I'll make a move, motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-three.
Second.
There's a motion in a second?
Question. Thank you.
Is there any discussion?
Thank you. Sorry, Ryan was too fast. So we will re-vote on this yearly. Is that correct, Paul?
That is correct.
Any other discussion? Alright then, roll call vote.
Smith?
Aye.
Kaczynski?
Aye.
Holbrook?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Budlung?
Aye.
And Henze?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries. Number six, discussion and possible action regarding special events within the City of Milton. Here we are, all together, so we can do this. All hands on deck. Thank you for all being here. I think this is important enough that I really wanted to see us all come together for it. We're gonna make, I would like to see multiple motions within, so rather than trying to build this mega motion, let's just start talking about different ideas and different things. If there's an idea, someone else, I propose we change this, discussion, motion, second, vote, move on to the next. There's no structure to it. It's not like we listed any out. I'll throw one out there, but otherwise, I guess I'll just open the floor to anyone that wants to propose a change and then we'll have discussion and move forward till everybody's happy.
If I could add on, is to start the discussion, I think one consensus that we all could say of the whole group here is we're proud of the amount of events that we do as a community. And I would say like overall, my sense from the group is we are overall proud of that and wanna be supported that. We're like kind of a pro-special event community. Is that fair or does anybody feel like, you know, yeah, there's concerns about budget and things like that, but like as just the amount of events as a community, I don't know if there's anybody here that says that we have too many events. To start in a, like a point of consensus is always a good part of discussion.
I'll.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm always like a little bit too late. I think I would like to discuss next, the amount that for each special event that the city can contribute to things that are borrowed, set up, things of that sort. It's currently set at five thousand dollars. I feel like that is too high. I would like to see it between a thousand to two thousand five hundred.
I had a couple people come up to me that had a concern about that and didn't realize that, but I, I felt that a reasonable compromise on that would be maybe five thousand dollars per organization per year. Rather than, so instead of making it by event, it's by organization. And I've had a couple people bring that to me and I, I don't, I don't know that I feel that that's unreasonable.
I would also like to mention that it may be different, or maybe we should talk about parades versus other events. I know that parades often will rack up a higher bill just because of the police presence and barricades, things like that needed. So that's something to take into consideration as well.
So in a premise of this. You okay?
No, yeah.
Okay. You're trying to push a button?
One of the things I wanna kind of put out there as an idea is the difference between a block party is a special event form. Also, a two or three day event is a special event form. I would like to talk about making the difference between the two. And I'm not saying, I don't know what that looks like exactly. I'm not proposing anything. I just think there needs to probably be more of a safety issue or, this is not directed, by the way, to Fourth of July. I'm just saying in general. You know, like it should be very easy to say, yes, there's a block party. Boom, done. You know, it's good to go. Cause we wanna promote these events. We want a community filled of events is from what I understand from the whole community. But I think we should talk about, is there one day versus two day? Are we talking about a hundred people versus five hundred people? Something that different, I think we definitely have a whole array of different types of events. And I don't think, I'm not sure if I agree that one event form or the process of approving it. I don't think we should have to approve every single little event. But I do think that when it comes to the bigger events or the more money or the whatever, and I'm not talking about our events just today, but even in the future, to prevent anything catastrophic, you know, and just keep our community safe and still have fun.
Charlotte, are you talking about just, there's just no real definition of what constitutes a special event? Are you talking about defining what constitutes a special event in the policy?
I think that's in our ordinance. Isn't it Jenny? Isn't it like the description is a private or public? It's very generic.
Let me pull that exact ordinance language, but just as of this point, block parties are not allowed within the city. So as far as a special event, it does not qualify as an event. It wasn't, there was one approved by the council, which anyone can come and ask something that is not within the ordinance, but that is not allowed currently. Just, just for clarification.
I, just on kind of Charlotte's topic and Molly's topic, as far as like the, you know, not bringing every event to council and possibly lowering the threshold. You know, say we lowered it to twenty-five hundred from five thousand or to even a thousand, whatever it is. You know, maybe one of the criteria for bringing it to council is if that request is above, you know, if we lowered that limit and we know that some people might need to go above it, then we can bring that to council to approve it if it is gonna go over that. The, yeah, I guess I'll stop there before I get into other topics.
I guess I'm curious as to why people don't want the things to come to council. I, I look back over this last year when we had it coming to council, and I view it as just part of our job. Putting it on staff, that's not their job to approve these things. It's their job to advise us, but as far as approval, it should be on the council. And I look back and as best as I can recall, I think it added a grand total of maybe ten, maybe fifteen minutes to the entire year of common council meetings. So I don't feel that that's an onerous kind of thing to have the council do. It, it didn't put a heavy burden or weight on us and, and sort of say, well, not everyone needs to come. Because I feel it alleviated some issues that had happened the year before. We didn't have any issues this last year. Just didn't.
What did it alleviate?
We had issues where there was an event that wasn't on the calendar and then DPW, they were fairly demanding about getting barricades downtown and all these types of things. We didn't have that this year. We've had staff get yelled at before. So come, if you wanna come in here and yell at me, I'll take it all day long. Let's do it. I welcome you to come through those doors and try that one. But our staff doesn't have to take that. And that's why I said I wanted them to come to the council meetings and get approval, that everything had to come before the council. And if you've got a change, it needs to come back before the council. Don't call staff and tell them that they need to get this changed. Come and talk to us. And I view that as part of our job. Quite honestly, that's, and it, it puts the burden on us, not on the city staff. And I think that they have enough. They already have to go through it so much, trying to get everything together for us. To put the additions when people call, when things aren't right, on them, when they should be coming to us.
Have we talked to staff to find out if that is an accurate state? I'm assuming you already talked, sorry, I should say it.
Yes, I know that it has happened in the past. And so that's why I, when we sat at Charlotte's and we did this the first time, that was one of the reasons that I wanted to have it come through the council. It used to come through the council and then for some reason it stopped. And we're just bringing it back to the way it was done in the past.
Jenny, you've been through this process for many years and the current situation of preparing it for council for approval versus past where I think you've been in situations where you had the authority to approve. Do you see any more work on your calendar by approving or not approving to a point for, per Ken's point?
I can't speak for any other staff, but I can speak for my portion of it from the city clerk's standpoint is there is not one or the other that does, that takes more work besides gathering additional information some very rarely, especially for new events. Just as, for information from previous about a couple of years ago, what we would do is if it was a new event, so not a recurring event, then it would come to council no matter the parameters, so that there was any conversations that were needed. If it was something that had been recurring, whether it be a Fourth of July Milton Maker's Market pork slash chicken roast, et cetera, then it would be unless there was a major change, then it was approved by staff. So again, I can't speak for Director Langer or Chief Sacksy who has to do a little more work than what I do now.
When I first got in council, I was brought up to council. Each one of them was brought to council and that changed fairly early on in my time in council because there was a lot of a general feeling like there's a lot of additional red tape that was thrown into things, not just with this, but there's a lot of different things that changed around, say, my first three years or so on council. A lot of different policies changed such as nonprofit policy, this policy, we started doing that, financial policy, a lot of that happened around the same time, but it was intended to try to get rid of some of the red tape and a little bit of the timeframe needed to get everything approved. And since the time it was felt that since staff already had to look through it anyways, instead of just adding an additional step, it was just simpler just to have staff approve it. So that's why I think it changed back when it did. So. I agree, the premise of what Alder Smith was saying is I, I think everything needs a funnel through us and we need to have eyes on, on target. And it's our job and responsibility. But I do believe that there's a hybrid approach is, you know, there's a difference between the Milton Fourth of July versus the Milton West cow bingo, right? So having, and this is one thing that I asked Jenny about in a suggestion or an idea to be discussed is the, having the staff be empowered to approve, but they get added to, they don't actually get finally approved until it's to our, add to our agenda with the consent agenda. And that way we have all the material and all the facts. And then as we approve the consent agenda, we would approve that, but it also gives an opportunity that if any council knows of any further information, it should really be highlighted, that it can actually be pulled out of the consent agenda and discussed at that evening. So I feel like a system like that has to check some balances where it keeps us in the loop. We're aware, we review, we see what's going on. And it also gives it a situation for us to pull out and discuss further and not approve, or to kick it to a future to table it for further investigation.
I too agree that there can be a hybrid situation. The way I was approaching it is a little bit different than Derek was in that any first time events, any events with alcohol and any road closures, street closures come before council. Otherwise give staff the authority to approve those cow bingo type events, although I don't know if that one had alcohol at the top of my head. But anyways, an event like that that is, you know, pretty minimal and easy to plan.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with the consent agenda piece of it and, and being able to, that way we still have to do our due diligence on everything. But yeah, I also agree that there should be criteria that really auto kicks it to council, like you said, with alcohol, for example, or street closures. So I, I do agree with, with that approach.
If it goes to the consent agenda, does, and we don't, nobody pulls it out of the consent, we just approve the consent agenda as is. Or if we had a question, the spokesperson would be here, right? Like we don't have an opportunity to ask any questions about it, so then we'd have to table it. Cause Brandon or Mark may or may not be here to answer it. Does that make, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I get what you're saying. To me, I mean, if it has to be tabled for another two weeks, you know, you, what, what's the timeline before they get submitted?
Thirty days.
Thirty days. So I mean, yeah, it could be pushing it, but I think like if, if we really get into that position where someone is not here to answer the questions and we can get a quick response from them, you know, over the next couple of days after.
Did you mean staff not here to answer the questions or the person requesting for the special event? Because I think you could easily say, your, your special event is going to be on the agenda, although it's in the consent, you should be here in case we pull it out. I think that solves that. Right.
As far as, there is not a specific definition in our ordinance that's what a special event is. What it says is no person may hold a special event on a public premise or a private premise without obtaining a special event permit. But then it guides it back to the special event permit packet. And that any special event permit shall be issued in accordance with the policies and procedures established by the common council and contained within the special event packet. In the special event packet, it is, no person may hold a special event on public premises without obtaining a special event permit. The interpretation has been if it is on the public premise, so that would include the cow pie bingo, the Milton Maker's Market, et cetera. And would be, would go through the special event permit packet. The other caveat is if it does require what they call a temporary class B picnic license, then it also, a special event packet would be required because there are security agreements that are in there of how that they are going to control the liquor. I think we should consider, and this is getting a little off topic, but consider modifying that special event on public premise, because right now that can mean a birthday party at a park pavilion. So we need to add in a public event, a public special event on public premise. If it's a private event, then they don't need to come through the special event process, but modifying that.
Yeah, Molly, that was my thought too. I was thinking about, I live across the street from Veterans Park and all the people have graduation parties and all that, like they don't have to go through anything for, for that, do they?
No.
Okay.
And it's public versus private. This was actually came up, I think about four years ago, is that it, that would be considered a private event, any type of, of birthday party, et cetera, because you're controlling who is going to be there compared to the public. Right, thank you. I just think we should clarify that in the special event packet.
I wanna ask Ken, with the, the thought of consent agenda, what's your feelings towards that process?
I was ready to get on and talk about that. I guess I don't understand the difference of just having it in the agenda as an item that we vote on or having it as consent. If the person's going to be here and it's, I don't understand the difference between having it in one part of the agenda or the other. I, that, I don't, I mean, I'm fine with either one, but I'm curious as to what the difference is. If it's just, we just vote on the consent agenda, it rolls it down the road, or we can, or otherwise then we have to go the extra step of pulling it out. If we do have questions about it or just have it as an agenda item and we just vote on it. If we, if we've read the packet and everything before you come, I'm curious as to what difference it makes where it's at on the agenda.
It's a great question and it leads into more of a broader topic. What's the point of the consent agenda? So you're right, in the premise of it, it's just a slight nuance, right? Like we could have, the financials have its own line item too. Like we could have all that broken out and have no consent agenda. So it really goes to a governing organization of how to define, how they want to utilize their time. So it just, it slightly expedites the process of a meeting. And that's basically the whole purpose of a consent agenda.
Well, I understood that. But I, I guess it, to me, it just didn't make a difference whether it was in the consent agenda or if it was just an agenda item. I don't mind, like I said, when I said, started, I don't mind if it's on the agenda and we're approving it. But I want to make sure that people that are throwing, having special events, when they get the permit, that if there are issues that they have to come to the council, they don't go to the city employees. If they've got an issue with it, they need to come and address us. And that is part of that, whole part of that nuance of that process.
So I, I would lean towards doing the consent agenda process. And I agree with Ken with these things, like we're not talking about, we're not saving hundreds of hours of time, you know, at all. And so that fifteen, twenty minutes of extra, just kind of like, I've seen the mayor say like, hey, chief, you know, here's this thing that you signed off for. Do you have any questions or concerns? Well, of course he didn't, cause he signed off on it. And same thing with Mark, Park Blower. So you have any, nope. And just like that whole kind of, and then sometimes we have four of them in a row. Nope, 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 nope. It's like consent agenda, you know? But it allows us to govern and allows us to pull out and, and it allows them to be in the audience. So I think it's a nice process.
Wanna go ahead and make a motion towards it? So you can get that one knocked out?
I have a question about that first, sorry. Jenny, this is maybe for you and Robert's rules. If there was one that we had significant concerns about, we could pull that one out and approve the rest, correct? So the consent agenda is actually in the City of Milton ordinance and it specifically, it states that the mayor or any alderperson may request removal of any item or part of an item included in the consent agenda. At the time, the consent agenda is considered, any such item shall be removed without debate or vote. And then if any item or part of the item has been removed from the consent agenda, the council shall consider that item at an appropriate time during the council's regular order of business. When this has happened in the past and items removed and then it is immediately discussed at that point, unless there is a conversation of doing it at a later time.
We've done that also where it's gone to like the back end of the council meeting, things like that. It's happened a couple of times. Not very common, but it does happen.
So I'm gonna make a motion and I'm gonna see how I can articulate this. I make a motion that we empower the staff to make its recommendation for approval of events. Except for the ones that require alcohol, road closures, or multi-day events. That would be a line item itself. And then all pre-approved by staff would go to consent agenda. I'll second it to go ahead.
I didn't think we were there yet.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm confused. I thought we were just talking about the consent agenda, not empower and not, I think those are two totally different topics to me.
I think the motion would be going, I think the motion, and correct me if I'm wrong, Derek, is that it's not really empowering, it's going to the consent agenda unless these things are on there.
But he, but he put in specific, help me out, specific types of events.
He, in the motion, you said that you would empower.
Those do not go to consent agenda.
Yeah, those, those be normal agenda items.
Yeah. So he's empowering them to put, to make the determination of what goes on consent agenda versus what goes on the actual full agenda.
And you're still gonna crack at everyone.
Yeah.
No, 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 I understand that. But, can you say it again?
So I was listening to conversation, the three things is like road closures, alcohol, multi-day events is what I heard of consensus as a group is things like, hey, you know, we really need to really, those are more highlighted items that should be its own line item. That's all I was trying to point out.
Okay, so you, you weren't saying that you were giving them the authority to approve?
No.
Just that you give them the authority to place it as a line item on the agenda and then the ones that don't have those go straight to consent agenda, correct?
Okay. So we're already halfway there. I was gonna call for discussion. Now we have a motion in a second, so I just have to say that. Any other discussion? Or is it clarified enough? Your choice of words, I, I can understand where, where we said empowered. It may lead one to believe we're letting them say yes or no to the event. You're just saying letting them, where they're putting it in our agenda. Understood now.
Yep, I'll, I'll extract where empower.
Any other discussion here?
Can we play that out for a second? Can we real play that for a second? Sorry.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Cause this is where one of my concerns lies. It's okay. So let's say we have all of these different, all the different events we have, right? So the community days is an ongoing six months every month during the summer. So they go to the, so it go, they're gonna fill out the special events plan, right, or packet. And they're gonna fill out each day, correct? Or each one gets a different?
No change. Hasn't been addressed yet.
Okay, but I'm just saying, okay, so the way it is. And then the management, what, what do you call it? The team?
City staff?
City staff. Looks at it, approves it, puts it in consent.
Nope, we do not approve.
Just goes on the agenda, either under consent agenda or as part of the normal agenda. Either way, it falls on our agenda for the next.
But they've already looked at it though.
Well, either way, we would look at it.
No, not we.
Staff.
They've already put their two sentences.
As we do today.
It's just one.
But if we have a concern, we just pull it from consent. No, 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 I get it. I'm just talking to you.
Yep, yep.
I guess I just thought I would like, I thought we could streamline it even further than that, but I don't really care.
I do have a question about though.
Yeah.
So what if staff has a concern about something like on there? I assume that they then bring that as a general light item rather than going on consent, correct? Is that what this?
That's what that empower word, right?
That was the power helps there. They get to make the determination if it gets to go, which route it goes.
Empower was withdrawn from the motion.
Do we need to add back in?
I, I did not second him removing that item change.
So staff has the able, staff can determine what goes on the consent agenda, what does not, is it has its own line item. Except events with alcohol, multi-day events, or road closures automatically get their own line item.
So there's a, there's another question in this discussion, but within the pack itself, and this is gonna be another piece of discussion, not necessarily in this motion, but it ties in together, right? Is if in the packet, I feel like there should be put by the chief, by the clerk and the public works, that if they have concerns for review, so it's either they approve or concerns reviewed that makes it into a line item.
I, I think we're stepping outside the scope of the motion. I think we have to stay within the motion and then we can discuss that as a different item.
So do I need to add the word empower back in? Nobody ever seconded you removing his amendment.
It was removed.
Any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Motion carries.
So I'm gonna start a new discussion item? All right, keep this moving along. So um the next question concerned I have heard. And it comes to the money part, right? And so um uh we so I'm gonna break this down top down is. Our community does a ton of events, which is great. But the concern is the financial stress onto all the budgets. Okay, and um and thus why I feel like that five thousand thing was initially started. So. I sent the email to the chief and to the public works asking them that is there a concern? Is your budget constrained because of all the events collectively? And they both responded to me, no. There is, I have no concerns, no worries and like that. And all these events that we do is very minor on the bigger scheme and there's no issue. The only event that presses both of them is Fourth of July. It it's the uh the big parade, cause there's lots of streets to manage and they have to, it's a holiday and they have to pull in overtime and things like that. And then the Fourth of July, cause it's such a big festival at that in itself. So collectively, and I think it's really good knowledge for us to understand that. With all the events that we do, there isn't an issue. And sometimes we can kinda think there could be an issue, but there isn't. And I then the follow up was with them is, is it hurting your budget with the current Fourth of July? No, and they said if it if it continued to grow, then they'd have concerns. And then the chief said also, right now with the staffing uh situation is if he found himself short-staffed. If he lost a couple officers because we're such a small or, you know, police force, uh that could be of concerns. So I wanted to report that to the council as we talk about the money side. I'll pause for a second.
I did some research as well. I called around to all of our neighboring communities and one outlier and asked what their policy was. Fees and reimbursement of fees are not fees, but of expenses incurred during special events. I called Edgerton, Fort Atkinson, Whitewater and Jefferson. And then as the outlier, I called Middleton because I know the captain up there and I knew he'd take my call. And I just wondered what that wasn't around this area. Most of them don't, but they all say the same thing. Every one of them said, you guys have, and one of them put it this way, you have a stupid number of special events. We don't, we can't even compete. And that's one of the great things about this city. I felt very proud when they said that. But most of them just have like one or two, like you know, Edgerton's big as Joey Mania. Whitewater, I think it's Whitewater, Jefferson said, well, we do have special events that typically don't require any services. They're just held in this area that they don't need any help over there. But all of them, uh well, three of the four in this area. Told me that by the end of the conversation, but our staff right now has been, before I called, has been looking at changing their policy. To require it because everybody's budget is getting hurt with everything. The rising cost of doing business, health insurance, all that. They're all reviewing their policies and looking at doing it. The outlier Middleton, they charge for everything. There's nothing free. They will give the school district a break because they're a partner. But their minimum uh for an officer, because that's, I was talking to a cop. And they have a lot of overtime there for especially when they do like Good Neighbor Fest and things like that. Or any event there uh is eighty-five dollars an hour uh for a minimum of three hours. And they're reviewing that and it's probably gonna go up to over a hundred because of again, healthcare and the other costs of doing business there. And there's nothing free. So when we look at this, we're we have a crazy number of of special events, which by the way, I love. I go to all of them. But we also have to be realistic, I think, in good stewards of the money. For our our taxpayers. That being said, I I didn't disagree when I heard like the the five thousand for one organization for a year. I thought, well, that's when we try and do a balance of reason with somewhere, find it. I I didn't think there was a bad one, but I also let people know, yeah, we we are, we're the only ones that are asking for it in this area. But they're all being reviewed and we have the most. So we we do have that strain that works its way through.
So well, we have the numbers for how much we actually spend on special events and we spend about twenty grand. Based off of what I just found, literally looked up overall. We have all these crazy amount of events and stuff, but we spend about twenty grand a year. In city resources on those special events. That's including Fourth of July.
But I I do think we need to be cognizant though of anything in the future. This isn't just for today. It's for the future as well.
I would, so my opinion on this is. I think the financial side, there isn't an issue. There isn't an issue. And what I mean by that is, and it doesn't mean that it couldn't eventually be an issue, but the reason why it's not an issue is, uh in my opinion, two items. One, we've had good stewardship as a town over the last five, ten years. And um and it's put us in a good financial situation. We have a surplus, for goodness sake, right now with twenty grand on the budgets, right? The second item is, it's kinda like a synergy when you have a great school district. A great community, a well-kept community and a community that's very vibrant. It brings and draws more interest and we've had great economic development on top of it. So a twenty thousand dollar investment by us into what's making this town special is great. And so it sounds like to me that we're fixing a problem that doesn't exist.
There may not be an issue right now, or the funds may be there right now, but in the future that we need to be planning for, that is our job. There may be an issue and those funds might not be there.
And one that.
Excuse me, I truly believe that the five thousand dollars per special event is much too high. It is not the taxpayers' responsibility. To pay for these special events. And we have twenty thousand dollars that we are contributing to these special events. And I think that's fair. We all love our special events. We decided on that, right? Um so I I do like Ken's idea of having a set amount per organization per year. I think that would be a fair thing. Uh but we do have to plan for the future, even though there might not be an issue right now.
And that's why there's elections and that's why there's future budgets and future councils. That as society changes and life changes and the town changes. Those councils make those decisions at those times. And at that point, they might implement things like we're talking about, cause it may make a lot of sense. But right now, I do argue that we're fixing a problem that doesn't exist.
I agree. I think we're fixing a problem that doesn't exist at this time. We also have the special event permit process. Which will allow us to react to any changes in the future that come up with it as well, without having to worry about fixing it now, initially that doesn't exist.
How so?
Because we can improve whether those events will happen or not. Every one of these expense, these events that expended uh city funds have been ones that. Even with the changes we just made, it would still come in front of council as an active item on our agenda item. Because they usually involve road closures, alcohol or multi-day events. So each one, actually for most majority of these, they're road closures. So.
Where did you find that?
Same information was sent in uh Janu- or actually, I think it was January of this year, uh stuff that Nisa's and Paul sent out. Regarding special events and the expenses we put into it when we were reviewing, uh when we set that five thousand dollar range, some of the email back then. So our events that it costs city money, our Civil War History Days, Christmas Parade, Community Days, Fourth of July. And the Gathering Place had something, which I don't know, it just says Gathering Place. So those are the items that we spend city funds on, all of those required road closures.
In twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-three. These are twenty twenty-three numbers. I don't have twenty twenty-four's numbers.
Right, but twenty twenty-five, we just added more events as well. I I I don't, I think we need to talk about a cap and if it's not. If there isn't a cap, we have the ability to then approve. A certain amount above that cap. Like I think it can be discussed, but I think there should be a limit.
We already have a set amount of five thousand, which is not necessarily a cap, is a, at five thousand, you start paying the difference over that. That's what we have in there. But as as you start bringing that number lower and lower, you start impacting more and more uh event organizations. Which are almost all nonprofits. And you're trying to get them to basically foot more and more of the bill for things. And those nonprofits are either using these, some of them are using them as attempt to try to make fundraisers. Others are not even using these as fundraisers at all. And you're just increasing more of the burden onto them.
I don't disagree, but I think putting that twenty thousand out there, we also have to include what we just approved for this budget. Of the um Gathering Place and the Naya and the Milton House Museum. And the. Nonprofits.
We didn't approve no budget. You're going to punish the entities that are the nonprofits in town for having special events then?
I'm not, no, I'm not at all. That is not my, that's not my point. I'm saying there should be a cap to, so we're not hurt it, we're being fiscally responsible. And we're allowing other people to throw events and not have something come in that is catastrophic. I'm not saying, let's get rid of the five thousand. I'm just saying, let's, I think it's important to keep a cap of some point. I'm not saying what that number is. I'm saying we need to keep it.
Paul, question for you, sir. You're not getting away scot-free here, sir. The end of this last year. What, how much money of the budget was left over that we put into the capital fund that we? We thought we had budgeted for, we we, cause we budgeted fairly conservatively. And at the end of the year, when we have that additional, we put it into the capital fund. Do you remember the number?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I can get that for you in a little bit.
Okay, cause my point where I was going with and has that. The city budgets fairly conservatively. And I were for one, either didn't realize, didn't read it well, or didn't know that twenty thousand was what we had spent as a city for all events for the year. I don't remember that email for some reason. And I would assume that we put more than that into the capital fund at the end of each year. So, yeah, I'm rethinking some things.
If I if I can use an example, guys. I've been running the Fourth of July Parade for about a decade now. Okay? And the current cost operationally for that event. With everything, with insurance and everything is probably six thousand dollars of cost to run the event. Okay? And then uh normally with the city, the city for the staffing and the closures and our six thousand. This year's unique and next year's unique, cause there's uh there's some road closure and detouring, that's gonna add as in our four thousand. With that. And so if. Um so in total, to run the parade uh with the closures of this year. Uh you're talking about a parade that costs about fifteen thousand dollars. To run. And so what's happening is, it's one thing for me to volunteer my time to run it. But when you're saying like, hey, and then also find ten grand. Ten grand to volunteer your time to run it. It's like, why, why would I do that? It's like you, it it's a financial discouragement for community members to step up that to run attrition. It's been over a hundred years on this town. So it's the reason why the Fourth of July is died died in Janesville, is they put in constraints. So. And then what will happen? If the, if we want to keep on going, guess what's gonna land on staff's shoulders? And then we're footing the whole bill of everything. You know, it's it's one thing is I'm volunteering my time, taking my summers away from my family for the last decade. And also coming up with six thousand dollars uh to help pay for the event already. And now you're asking me to pay ten. It it just, it don't, it don't, not feasible.
Okay, so where's there a middle ground then? You obviously have something in your head. Where's where's a middle ground on this? I think there has to be a some sense of compromise. And again, I think you've all heard me say it. Compromise by its very nature means both sides walk away a little unhappy. Uh so what's the compromise here? I I I don't know that we need to go down to a thousand, but I don't know, I don't, I guess I'm looking for some advice here, guys. Where we can keep going back and forth and obviously there's uh two different hard feelings about this. But where where is there a middle ground so that we can move on to the next item and keep this going reasonably?
To answer your earlier question, Ken, um last year in two thousand twenty-four. Our revenues exceeded expenditures by four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. And forty-four.
I actually think when we discussed this before, we probably hit the middle ground with the five thousand dollars. When we set this up back, well, a year, less than a year ago, I think that's when we hit the middle ground, was that?
Okay, I I I think there needs to be a limit, cause you can never just let people go constantly. I, when I said that earlier about for the year, I was just letting you guys know, this is what I've been told. And I didn't think it was terrible. I also don't have a problem leaving it where we had it originally. I I don't have a problem with that personally. And I I think that's a decent middle ground. Uh and I think it's a decent compromise. It doesn't, the the smaller events that you're talking about, it won't affect them. The larger events, it at least is some help, but it also, it helps put in some constraint there. Where sometimes things can just continually grow, grow, grow if there is no nothing set as a cap. And so that's my personal feelings on it. I me personally, I don't see a reason to change the five thousand, especially given the fact that. When we see what we're, how we budget in this city, how much is being put over to the capital fund at the end of the year. And I know that changes year by year. And this next year, it may be smaller because we didn't have as many building permits come in. But I I feel that the five thousand is a good, solid compromise.
The next thing to discuss then is going to be five thousand dollars per event or five thousand dollars per organization. Some of the events uh are individual events if they're multi-day. Um so that adds up to a larger number than just the five thousand. So that's something I wanted to think about as well.
At the end of the day. There's only two things that happen that's even close to five thousand dollars. And that's the Fourth of July Parade and Fourth of July Festival. Everything else is, I think the next one, Civil War Days, maybe a thousand dollars, fifteen hundred bucks, eighteen? So really what you've implemented is a penalty towards the Fourth of July in Milton. In essence, there's no other event that comes close to five thousand dollars. And so and then if you bring that down, you're just charging the Fourth of July more. It's like, why, why do this? And then to the point of having a five thousand dollar one to one organization. Well, I'm shutting down open doors, because what's the point? If it does Community Days, Fourth of July Parade, Christmas Parade. Basically after the parade. That or uh then basically we're paying for everything and it makes no financial visibility. We're we're shutting down all the events. We're not doing Community Days, we're not doing the festival, we're not doing the Christmas parade, cause we can't afford it.
Even if you take open doors out of the situation, say another entity was doing something similar, you're basically handicapping any organization who wants to try to have multiple events. So we're gonna see a drastic reduction in the number of events. And it's something that I think a lot of people already appreciate. There's a lot of events here and the events bring people to town. So by trying to cripple any one organization that's trying to run a bunch of events, we're basically in essence going to be. Destroying events in our town.
Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of thinking here, you know, why fix what ain't broke? I mean, we have the the proof of. You know, our surplus, we have the proof of how much was paid out in twenty twenty-three. I can't imagine it's that much different. And you know, to address the concern over, you know, that that's our job to make sure we're thinking about the future. I totally agree. And if if we see a drastic change, you know, if there is a reduction in the police force, if we see. Larger events popping up where, okay, now there's getting to be more events that are rivaling the fourth or some of these other ones. You know, then we readdress it. But right now, I just think we're, I think we're fixing a problem we don't need to fix.
I I agree. I I am now hearing some numbers that specifically Ryan had. I don't think lowering it to a thousand would be beneficial, so I I will back off that. But I I would like to address Derek. I do want to move away from like the Fourth of July and other events. I don't want you to be singled out or feel like we're attacking. I think we need to be thinking about all events and events can grow. So there might be in future events that come to this level. So I I I don't want to be thinking just Fourth of July and other events. I think we need to be addressing all events fairly.
Then maybe that's a topic that comes up when we have more than one organization that's doing lots of big events. Cause otherwise it becomes targeted attack and or viewed as a targeted attack. Not not just even from one side or the other, but even from the public. We should proceed that way.
What are your thoughts on? So Milton is known for its parade, its Fourth of July Parade, correct? Known far and wide. What are your thoughts on the city providing the Fourth of July Parade? And the and then open doors continues with their Fourth of July Festival.
Well, it's more than just having saying who's gonna pay for it. Open doors does the organization of it. And so if you say, well, the city's gonna take over the parade, then we have the additional cost that is being volunteered right now. Uh we'd be paying someone to do that.
No, I'm talking about.
You're just talking about financial.
Just financial.
Just the financial aspects. So you're talking about doing a full reimbursement to Open Doors for the parade? But I I'm, yeah, I'm asking Charlotte.
I mean, I think we, I I don't. Yes, I am, and here's why, here's why, um. I think we're Milton's history is. Everybody knows about the parade, everybody loves the parade, people come home all the time, you know, they've moved away, it's, I'm not saying it's a silly thing, but it does. Make the Milton look very good, everybody thinks the city puts it on, Derek has been running it, and I'm not. I'm not, I I think he should be transparent and or there should maybe somebody helping him out or this, you know, like. I'm not saying, I I don't have an idea on how that works, I just think the city should. If we, I'm just asking, what is your thoughts on that? Because I don't disagree with what Derek's saying. And or any other, and I am not disagreeing with Ryan. We don't wanna penalize the nonprofits, it takes a lot of freaking time and effort and energy, and it's exhausting. To put on events that people may or may not volunteer for, that the city loves. But we have to keep in mind that it, what do we want to keep? What are we rich in tradition and what what are those things that we can keep and or we don't really, the city, city doesn't really put anything on. We don't, there aren't, there isn't anything that we really pay for. As far as any festivals or parades where cities usually would.
A quick question then, I I feel like we're straying from the original thing that we would be trying to do emotional, we we're veering a little bit, but, uh. If you're saying that you feel that. Given not hearing the numbers, cuz it does change your perspective when you hear the numbers. Uh, that we the city should reimburse Open Doors for the full amount of the parade, then I guess it just gets down to then. Why have, like the to the point that you guys were making, why have the, at all, that that limit set? And if you're gonna go down one rabbit hole, you jump down the damn rabbit hole.
I'm only my thought and what I'm bringing to you, I'm not saying my opinion is, I just have been noodling this. Over the last six months, you know, like, why can't the city just? Open Doors is already planning it, executing it, organizing it, doing all that. Why can't we just pay for the one parade, that's the only event in the entire year? That we, the city would be in chart, like taking cu- charge of, paying for. And everything else has the same cap. I'm just removing that one event.
I feel like if we do one parade, we're gonna have to do all parades. Um, another organization may come in and be like, I wanna throw a big parade, why can't I get my pa- parade paid for? Um, so if we're gonna do one, I think we should do the lighted Christmas and the homecoming as well.
Well, I I I disagree with that theory, I because because we said that's what we're gonna pay for, that's why. Uh, because we can, that's why, I that's why you don't get the money because you decided to have ten kids on a bicycle riding down the street in color parade. No, uh, it's because because of what Charlotte was saying about the tradition and the history. And the it's that, uh, when we, when I look at things. Sitting up here and at my responsibility to this community, it isn't just the fiscal part, it's also those intangibles that make people want to live in Milton. People move here for a variety of reasons from the school district on down, but what keeps them here? And I believe strongly it is our special it is and our quality of life and those quality of life issues that are intangibles, and our third parade is one of those. It makes you, yeah, yeah, we got one, I'll tell people I live in Milton, they go, oh, you're, aren't you that place with the parade? So, yeah, I don't, but if we're going to just say, you know what, guys, enough is enough, then I say. What what some point we gotta report a motion, uh, but why not? Just if we're all feeling like this. Screw down to emotion, I I move that we remove the five thousand dollar cap for special events.
I'll second it so we can talk about it.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So I was gonna make a comment. I was gonna make a comment, I guess, regarding the parade, if instead of just saying we'd pay for it. I think the better approach would be that we'd waive the the costs of the roads closure stuff that that on. And here's my reasoning behind that, one, if we said we're gonna pay for it, there, we'd have to include oversight. On the entity that's running it to make sure they're properly using the funds, whereas if we're just. Waiving the cost of the road closures and stuff like that and and things that go with that one thing. Then it doesn't require the level of oversight that the other option would be, and doesn't put the burden on Derek in this case, or anybody who's technically running it. Of the fact that you're using city funds, so that's a suggestion for cleaning that up a little bit. As far as waiving the five thousand, I guess I just hadn't thought about that one yet.
Jenny, is it good form if I amend to say, uh, I would amend the motion. To read that, uh, the city would waive the, uh, what's the best way to say this? The fee associated with the Fourth of July Parade.
And remove the five thousand cap?
Yes, we the, I I guess I'm I'm searching for how to say this, the verbiage, you know what I'm wanting to say, I just don't know how to say, now I'd put it into words.
I think you, uh, remove the five thousand dollar, um, maximum that the city will pay for any special event from the special event application.
No, I was talking about for the Fourth, I was gonna amend to.
Just the Fourth, just cuz the Fourth of July is the only one that.
That's for the parade, just for the parade, and we remove the five thousand, move the remove the five thousand dollar fee cap for the Fourth of July Parade. All the rest of them are still have that limitation.
No, that's okay, so, so. Based on that information, this sound like two different things, if you're waving or amending the motion to remove. You're striking the five thousand dollar cap for special event permit applications and adding with the wave. Waiving the fees for the Fourth of July Parade, is that correct?
I take back my second.
So there is a motion?
Just to say it one more time, it's we're keeping the five thousand cap, but we're waiving it for the Fourth of July Parade.
Yes, I second that one.
That's what I got out of it, and I just wanted to clarify, that's what I was getting, that's what you wanted, right?
No, Jenny, can you please clarify? The original, we'll we'll kind of break it down, because the original motion was to remove the five thousand dollar cap for special event permit applications. There was a second, um, of by Alderden Holbrook, and then, uh, Alderden Smith said. That he wished to waive the, excuse me, amend the motion to remove the five thousand dollar cap for special event. Permit application, she's using language here, strike the verbiage, remove the five thousand cat dollar cap for special event permit applications. And add waive the fees for the Fourth of July Parade, and then there was a second.
I guess for a point of clarification, by striking that from the application, that means removing the five thousand dollar cap from the application.
Uh, striking the language that.
From the first motion, thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
I will abstain from that vote.
Anyone opposed?
The motion carries with one abstention by Alder Henze. Thank you, guys, we came together on that one.
We'll comment and it kind of, it's the five thousand, I think was a middle ground we met before.
Yeah, it was.
So I think that that was a fair to kind of keep that for now and, yeah.
So any other topics there that we want changed in the application?
I would say that as we move forward through these with the changes, realize that we're changing a policy now. And if things change in the future, we can always meet again to change the policy, so let's not get too bogged down. On s- certain things, that just know that we're changing it now, we can meet again in the future and change it again.
This isn't an ordinance where you have to actually go through a whole bunch of hoops.
That's exactly why we did it as a policy, so we could change it in the future without having to go through the changing of an ordinance.
And I'd also add in the fact that there's a policy that's supposed to guide us too. It's not necessarily, we have to exactly follow everything here, we can make spot decisions as needed. Especially when we are approving certain event permits in the future, so there is some leeway we have in the future, this is a policy, a series of guidelines for us, so.
But thank you for the feel-good, that's good.
I wanna have one more feel-good.
We're making good progress.
Thank you guys so much, the only reason why I'm running the Fourth of July Parade is because when I was knee-high, I was in the dang thing. So I'm emotionally attached to the event and being a veteran, it means a lot, thanks.
Thank you for that. And we appreciate all that Open Doors does and all the different organizations too, and certainly don't wanna hinder the organization and all the great things you do. Uh, by anything that we may do to protect it against future, so. With that, uh, any other modifications or things we wanna talk about to our application that we haven't talked about already?
This does not need to be discussed tonight, but, uh, staff did request this was actually going on a future agenda, uh, and it is regarding special events. Is if there is any concerns or requests for reserving public premises for ongoing events. So for example, if there was an event in North Gridridge Park that is happening every single year, or Lamar Park or. Wherever, um, how if the city. Ch- or the council chooses to, do we put that event on indefinitely, do we reserve that?
For instance, and we've spoken about this at length, I could reserve the, uh, North Gridridge Park, the pavilion up there for. Uh, the third weekend in May. And then, you know, a an annual event that we hold every year here is hindered by that. And you know, who should get precedence and when should they get precedence and who, you know, um. It's something that needs to be thought about and something that needs to be addressed.
Not hindered.
Yeah, great, yes, crippled.
You're talking about like, say, like, we know that we're gonna have the pork, uh.
Exactly, yep.
Uh, every year, it's gonna be happening at the around this time, but wouldn't we need to give, you're saying just to allow it to happen?
Uh, so it's specific to public events essentially, but, uh, for example, we'll use the park since you are brought that up. Is that North Gridridge Park, we do know that they continually have it the exact same weekend every single year. So we do put that on the calendar, however, there are newer events that they are in other locations. And they don't put a special event permit application till sixty, thirty days in advance. Do we put that on the the calendar? Before a special event permit application is put in?
Do we block space for it, basically, planned, then it's coming?
What did you say, Ryan?
Do we block, do we block space knowing that that event is coming?
Well, is that the responsibility of the city to do that, or is it the responsibility of the organization to come to see and say, we we wanna have do this every year? And then can we do this and and, uh, or should the city be doing that for them? I I guess I would look at it a bit more like, if you're gonna hold an event, you're gonna have it this time every year, you might wanna have a commu- conversation with the city.
I wanna celebrate my sixty or my fifty-fifth birthday five years from now, and so I'm gonna reserve the park, you know, maybe the weekend of May twenty-first.
I think.
I think the city does have some responsibility for those long-time, uh, events to try and protect them.
And an example I would throw out there is, uh, Civil War Leading History Days for this year. When we, uh, Keaton was working on the application for, we were dealing with all, uh, deciding. How we're gonna handle special event permits at the beginning of the year, which then delayed the application coming in for, I think, a month and a half or so. In which if something else, if that wasn't the case, something else caused that delay and somebody else got in there first, we would have lost that site.
And I'm not saying don't let it happen, that's that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying, yeah, I'm fine with them doing that, but I think that the event. Has a responsibility to come in and say, hey, we want to do this indefinitely, not the city going, hey, we see that you do this regularly, so we wanna do this for you. Am I am I missing what you guys are asking for? Cuz I think that the event needs to come to the city and say, we want to do this. This like the pork thing, we know it's gonna happen this weekend in August every year, can we go ahead and just get that?
I think we uh, we would like to add that to the policy. If that's gonna be the way it is, and then if the council wants to allow an organization to take over a park. The third weekend in June every year, that would, we would like to have that in the policy.
I think it makes sense to have in the policy, it's also, you you, organizations unless they know that they can come in and ask for that, we'd have to find some way to notify. Certain ones and stuff like that, so I think it would be good to have it covered in the policy so that when. If Paul ever leaves us, we get a new person coming into his spot, or Jenny leaves us, somebody else takes that spot on, there's all already a policy guiding it. No, I know I'm not, I know I'm not, but I mean, see, if, at some point Jenny's gonna retire. At some point you're gonna retire, we still need to have the policy in place to cover when when they retire.
It needs to be in the policy, but I think it they, just to give the that organization the option to come in and ask for that. And I was interpreting Paul, you were saying that the city has a responsibility to do that for them, and I was like, why would I do that? The city does have their responsibility, if you know, an organization, the organization has a responsibility to come and talk to the city, we should have allowed my policy.
It'd be nice though if the organization could be let know that that we could do that though.
Absolutely, but how many, let's let's look at this then, how many events do we have that are gonna happen every year at the same time? Like, okay, I'm assuming now you will talk to Keaton about this, right? And I'll talk to Theron, and we'll we'll make sure the pork chop one gets in there too, cuz I cook there every year, so. Uh, we 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 can make these things happen, I think that's, we're a city of less than six thousand, we can make sure that people get notified.
Well, there was also an overlap with the Christmas Parade last year, and someone was in the community house celebrating, a young child was celebrating her birthday and. The Christmas Parade and the tree lighting were occurring right around them.
Well, that's a special day for that child.
And a di- idea that, uh, that our staff actually talked about as an option. Was that events that have been going on for longer than two years would continually be on there. So for example, if it's a newer organization that in a newer event, and they don't know for sure if it's going to be. After two years and they continually say we're going to do be doing that, or five years, or whatever it may be. Then it's automatically put so that some of the events like the pork roast that I believe Deb had mentioned was from the sixties, started in the sixties. Is always going to be on there and Civil War Day is, um, et cetera, those ones we know for sure are going to be. But that's just an option to input, if it's an event that's annually been happening for a certain amount of time, it's automatically put on.
I would say three years. You get your one, two years, cuz your second year might be, you you do it because the first year was so great, and the second year might struggle, I think three years is a good. Period of time, cuz then it's consistency, it's showing that consistency.
I'll put it in the form of a motion.
Let's do it one time, please.
Do we wanna indicate something on the special event form that says this will be a yearly? Or no? I'm saying we already have so many of these. I feel like we have so many of these already, right, so why wouldn't we just?
Because if I was holding an event for the first year, I don't qualify. So why would, why would I even have that jackpot on there? Why don't I talk to the people who have been there three years or more and say, hey, do you keep on planning on even to do this?
So I guess, I'm gonna try here on a motion, see if we can capture this. Take a motion to add to our policy, that after an event has been on the same scheduled. Date or known timeframe for a period of three years that we, um. Work with that entity to see if we want to per- just permanently block that timeframe.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Is there any any discussion, or do we wanna have Jenny reread it?
A motion to add to the special event policy that for an event that has been on the schedule for three years. At the same time, to permanently block that timeframe on the city calendar is what I would add.
Any discussion on that?
I think the only thing I said that maybe maybe didn't get in there is maybe discuss with them blocking it. Rather than just straight up blocking it, I don't know if that's a matter to anybody here.
Or we just looking for giving you the ability to block, give you the power to.
I just want some guidance so I don't accidentally book over, uh, a city event that has been going on for sixty years.
Uh, and just add a little bit more too, this does come into effect, especially if we do have new staff at any time. That they know for sure, we can put that in there and it's already for, um, the next after three years, it's for five years, so, yeah. That they know for sure, we can put that in there and it's already for, um, the next after three years is for five years. So yes, if. Paul or I are no longer here or our administrative assistants are not here who manage the, most of the calendars, then it's still on there and we have the notes. So that's another reason why it was, was, uh, talked about.
Ryan, I guess, can you possibly amend to start now three years moving forward or can we go back in time three years?
Unless I wanna start now and going three years from now, I'd rather go ahead and react, uh, I guess retroactively make this three years back. Or we'll just say that any event that's already been in existence for three years or more would fall already under the sky lines. Yeah. So the minimum would be that any, uh, event that has already existed for three plus years would be grandfathered into this.
From today's date.
Do you have to resecond?
Molly, you're good with all that? That's your second?
Resecond.
You wanna talk about it anymore or modify it anymore, discuss it anymore? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Any other discussion or points of action that we wanna take on agenda item number six?
Just to clarify with the council, uh, I would like to have the whole policy together. Present that at a council meeting for everyone to vote on as an entirety, seeing it and writing, so everyone's got a chance to review it.
Yeah, I like that idea, yeah. We need a motion to do that?
Okay. Thanks for that. Uh, so then, do you have something, Molly?
I do, um, just talking about the deposits in that first paragraph, uh, it talks about deposits. Other than like the park rental fees, are there any other fees that the city has ever collected in the past couple of years for a special event? Other than the overage of five thousand?
No.
Thank you.
It has been talked about with staff if they have done it ten plus years ago, but in at least the last ten years now.
Anything else? Right then, uh, agenda item number seven, next meeting date is November fourth, twenty twenty-five, and I would take a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
This motion is second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. We stand adjourned. Thank you.